Okay, the time given by the board. As you say. So. I think all this being the county board's vice president. Was Sarah put the role call?
We mark him present.
Hold back.
Yeah.
Well, I will show that we have twenty members present, seven asked.
All right, next vote with many statement. This meeting and all the meetings of the score are open. The board said that most didn't give to the vegan courts with Wisconsin factions. So then the citizenry may be where the dying face agenda of this thing. Next silent meditation. This morning, we're asking you to please keep in mind the very help of helping. Supervisors, employees, and family members. Who are facing cancer now of serious health condition. Please stand.
I would definitely reply. I mean, I have a state of America.
I do. Next. We can watch for the agenda. Thank you. And a second supervisor there. Questions and they saying they just presented. Any questions or discussions? Last vote.
The red color can go please. Last chance vote. That carries twenty two year off.
All right. Well, this. First of all, explanation of the twenty twenty six budget concerns. Want to thank you all for coming this morning. For your suggestions. Especially want to thank your department heads. For your hard work and reviewing the budget, coming out with suggested production of the expenditures. Those efforts are greatly appreciated. Especially want to thank. Our finance director Heidi for her hard work. Now know where offices, where legal access is, where our health numbers back end, wake up in the morning making multiple sense. Anyway, my plan this morning is to have Heidi come up update us for a wrap budget. Then vote on the split list of suggested cuts for expenditures. Assuming. We will still be in a deficit situation. Then look at and whose one time temporary solutions fulfill. I can assist budget. If we still have a deficit, we will start round two. Ask for good ideas for changes to existing ones. Challenge. And I mentioned to Andy Ford was the attorney for the county association that comes up with this course that. I planned to lock the door, but key away, you know, we could balance budget. So that's what we're here this morning. Anyway. After hopefully after we have a balanced budget, he'll go come back to finance tomorrow. But hey, come up with a balanced budget. Then I also want to talk about twenty twenty six activities. Particular things like other communities. It's common city schools about shared services. This is a time process. We looking at what other companies have done, like our gaming county meant. Talking to other companies about agreement agreement. Preparing the agreement, more appropriate agreement. And definitely so it's kind of personal tasks. Also look at how abilities for centralized and services here in home acting economy. Bring artists. Look for more grants. Comparing at the economy expenditures to other counties. How much we spend versus other counties. Bring back the money line with the other towns. Look at increasing the property tax, which will be for a random. Or implementing a vehicle registration fee. And if I'm ready on the turn. Like the majority of companies listening there. I'm sure the values do affect heavy. And then in May, prepare the five years strategic strategic plan. And set priorities for twenty twenty seven budget. Decide which services should be cut or reduced. Which revenues can be increased. And then between now and May, have departments and committees. Work on identifying services that can be cut. Renew mandated versus non-mandated requirements. Get citizen input on proposed changes. And review opportunities for increasing revenues. And also delete this effort higher a calling administrator. The three different ways of leading the colony. There's calling administrator, which is appointed by the calling board. Calling executive. Which is elected by borders, like our gaming town else, for example, is led by the borders. And then third, which we have administrative coordinator. That has very good powers, very. And enforcing a budget across departments. And that's why I feel we need for the county administrator. Would also add a monthly stat session for the coming board. Uh, uh, to report to the coming board on progress speech funding now in May. On our progress towards. To change the balance budget. I feel this approach will give us time doing thorough job. Making some well brought decisions. Some very difficult choices. But that could like the smart idea.
Okay.
What did?
Um, I sent out an email on Friday, just kind of addressing some of the concern for the twenty twenty six budget. Um, it is a. It's a now that stated. But we have received all the lessons from some maybe third action here about four million. Four um. Two million in capital and approximately really been operating, understanding the two different funding. Sort of a kind of unique, we utilize the property bill or the sale tax to fund our capital expenditures. And then the operating expenditures are funded through all other revenue streams within the company. Um, in previous years, we've been able to utilize a healthy bond balance to purchase on our capital expenditure. Above the discount tax. And so that is how we've been traditionally flooding and still capital expenditures. And the general one one mountain is beginning to meet the threshold of the quality. Of twenty five to the expenditures. And so at this time, I'm, you know, totally see how twenty twenty five is very well. It was important that we kind of see where that one balance is. So. That. We are able to analyze that base and see what if there were any of the top projects would be funded with that. It's been a perfect, kind of a perfect store on the operating thing. And we all know the our own belongs to our property tax to be part of construction. And past five years, our percentage of the people had about one point one percent for two hundred and seventy one thousand dollars per year. Um, that does not, that construction does not equate to inflation. So as inflation has increased. Much at a much higher rate than what that construction has has done for the local economy. On the other operating expenditure, we have interest investment, which is a large revenue source for the county currently. Five years ago, not so much, and as our operating expenditure has increased, we were interested in. Um, also increase because the percentage of return was was high. And so we were able to balance our budgets utilizing that incentive investment. In twenty twenty six, we anticipate that only for the interest rates to stabilize, but also. But in the same example, your partner, there's less funds invested to earn impact. And so those two, those two elements of all has really negated and increased in operating revenue. So that's really the two scenarios which we are basing in twenty twenty six. We had operating costs are increasing and we provide services. So first of all, our, our ties, because that's what we do as a company, we provide services to the company. To drive the capital expenditure over just, there was a number of projects that our, our equipment that was not funded in twenty twenty six budget. So we were able to balance the capital expenditure with with the most with all the bill tag. Um, with those. So that all that that two million dollars we were able to balance through. In addition, operating funding after finance committee not to have. You know, every department come back and review their budget. So we had one, I was told that I'm not, I did not live every six dollars or seven dollars dollar. Um, reduction in expenditure that came into our office to produce the budget. Those are all greatly appreciated and they're not any less than the other ones. Um, that is every little bit helps and it is very. And I appreciate everything the department head that was able to make those adjustments. I did know some notable changes that the planning committee committee that needs and they. Um, to summarize will be adjustments and we're able to increase their revenue by five dollars. Um, the sheriff's department is willing to house state planners at twenty eight million dollars. May that would be a net increase. In revenue concept with them by two hundred fifty thousand. Both the public health department and human services were able to reduce expenditures. Um, to have some pretty significant impact on property tax. Along with the recommendation to reduce the premium for interviews for. And telling more members to attend interviews after we were able to reduce fourteen thousand dollars. In addition, I did receive some, some information, some feedback from some of you. Um. And I want to correct my first one on share more active threat that form performing what he had recommended. Um, no premium for the coming for chairs and for like salaries, so that has been activated with maybe about eight thousand dollars. And again, the interview piece was right out and did already make that adjustment. Um, reducing the number of Danny's maybe to six. Further evaluation, we need to be needed when they need to be done to really understand what the impact of that would be. Just because we develop how many committee members, for example, six, Daniel's maybe how often they would need. And I'm glad that was if they were to the existing. Structure that is for accounting. Um, I did have a recommendation to spend increases for five years. That certainly when our community research policy that every year you'll. And as that progression through that structure that the problem has. Um, that that cost right is updated seven hundred ninety three thousand dollars for those increases. But that also includes. Um, essentially all increases either by resolution of the county board or tuning contract and. And the second reason on on the. That are part of the policy. All of that would not be a direct impact to that lobby. Um, again, there's a number of positions that are fully funded, some positions that are partially funded and. Um, so. That a reduction would not be a complete reduction to that lobby. So that was one one projection. Um, right now, the budget call for one and a half percent possible living adjustment. That again, it is an impact about four hundred and ten thousand dollars again. Um, that's Tony White, so that would have to be evaluated to determine. Which of that how much revenue would have to be reviewed along with based due to funding position and grant. Um, position. So those were part of the projection. Um, after the finance committee met on last week, I did, we did tell the reevaluation of the I know. And I wanted to make note that this concern is not going to burn. You know, this isn't, this is something that would need to be addressed and. Um, it is what I, what I would keep proposing. Would be, um, like I said, the mental essential to maintain a flatter of approach to. Moving forward, this would be kind of a one time. Um, item that you could balance the budget and then look at. Um, pocketing measures. New revenue sources and possible expenditure cut for program cut. And that would allow you for some time to evaluate that these. A community involvement, they should understand. Um, the programs, their mandates, what, what services we want to provide, but first we don't want to provide on those items. One item to consider would be position making the factor. So you have some positions that may not. Um, you see your pipeline filling those positions and or. Um, or did it would be considered a position making be where you've been in those positions. During the twenty five month of practice, we think it was something you want to fund. Um, there's two positions that are under, you know, extension contract. One, the point side support administrative system. And that would be a positive and definite level for forty one thousand four hundred eighty nine dollars. There's another point by a team, we can do extension contract position to continue nutrition, it will tax the Tony. And this is in place of the provides program. That would be a budget impacting thirty two thousand five hundred eighty three dollars. In the budget, finance department, we have a vacant competition. I have not filled that position, the reason being is I haven't. Um. Intended on a pathway to looking for our participant for five conditions. As finance director, so I could have that position open and vacant so that there would be funding available to help you. Fund overlap on the finance sector if you chose to do so. And that right now has a budget and has to a hundred and fifty one thousand, getting thirty nine dollars. You come position is less than that, but as a finance director with overlap, that's the cost for the bus to break down. So that could be removed and depending on your final transition plan, that would determine probably the fund that. He wasn't thinking of. Thank you. Um, there's two telecommunicator positions that remain vacant. And in talking with sheriff's department, my understanding that those two positions because of the type of. Um. Training that is involved in giving a telecommunicator on boards. Is the likelihood of being able to go to the mission in twenty twenty is unlikely. And so that would be a budget in fact of hundreds of millions of dollars. We have a couple of other finding options. Um, we have a position that's confused by our counselor and human services. When that position came on on board, that position was funded with whole period settlement fund. It does need requirements of the whole period settlement. Um. On the whole period settlement funding and so. The proposal would be to fund that position, go back to fund that position with all the whole period of that. And keep that up to this part of our of those funds. Um, another option. We had allocated funding for broadband expansion. And that was done back in. Twenty twenty. Twenty one, two thousand twenty one. Um, the board can act to use our money to pay for highway construction projects. And then we took those funds and set up a number of community programs to enhance. Um. Right, transportation, challenger initiatives, another one of those programs with broadband expansion. Um, those funds are not in front and right now their broadband expansion is pretty much halted. And so we can take that some revenue to thousand dollars and bring it over back to the general fund to. Um, the budget with that one time funding. The other option could be to transfer some funds from highway operations and that. And then once the web line mitigation makes kind of central control and that from the general fund is. Make all we could then check the both funds back to highway operations. And then we have any really any other estimate or any additional recommendations by the board. Um, again, we see that our temporary pushups and they don't resolve the coming one terms of our short budget challenges. But it does provide the board with time to assess. And for the science to be prepared. And then. Even if the options are as happened, it doesn't mean you can't amend the twenty twenty next budget. So if as you go through these practices and new buying areas as to where they want to reduce. Um. Expenditure or having increased revenue moving into twenty twenty six that you want to take effect. We're more than able to do that and we have that capability to amend the budget. Reduce some expenditure as largely fit and and then moving forward through twenty twenty six and into the twenty twenty seven budget. So that way now. And chair more than I mentioned, there are some. Um. Actions as far as revenue for operating. The fact is, the only thing is your property taxes by representatives. It's sort of. Red, red, red hole, which would not be able to occur because of the word January month twenty twenty six. Um, you do have the action to avoid for your capital. Which is the cost of interest and issuance class, which we see that. And the third option for operating is the full registration fee. Um, so those are our actuals that are going before and then obviously. Or looking at other instructors, make sure that we're capturing all the revenue we have. They have a lot of departments are mandates that how much they can. Um, charge for their services and and maybe do a job building, but also looking at all those fees. Those are attachments, you know, always remind and increase revenue. To support because everything perfectly we provide. But if that's not doable, we'll start looking at those services and. I determine if there's what services and what level we're going to provide those services. That's what I have.
Questions for Heidi before in. What did?
Yeah. Um.
So whatever when you decide today, that's go back to finance tomorrow, then it comes back. Hold the word.
Absolutely, the best task is really is the reading occurs for the county board at the end of October. And at that point, we'll have the reading of the budget and then in November, it will actually back the budget. And so any decisions, you know, really having the county board input because. These are budgets that were filed forward by the committee, so all of you have had. Have been questioned on top, so it's important for you to understand what that, what that is. Any recommendation coming from the county board today will be incorporated. Um, I don't know that I will have time to get that all. I mean, in general, I think all of my next committee is super rad. And we may have had a second very high end committee prior to the reading, just to be sure that. Well, we have a balanced budget, but we're on track to probably work. But by the reading, we should have a clear understanding of what, what that looks like.
So it just seems to be like the. Unnecessary to that. That's the model. Um, maybe I think we should make the decisions today. And then if there's a need for that second special financial work reading. Uh, we should go back and all. And we give you more time to put everything together instead of having to have it to model. Would let the. Department heads and staff know pretty much where we're going to handle. Instead of drawing this out of. Small steps.
I think I'm understanding, it depends on which role, it depends on what happens today. How quickly, how quickly I'm able to turn around numbers for my end committee tomorrow. Because also I had thought, you know, previously having decisions that are made today. That affects, you know, all sorts of revenue streams and all of that, and absolutely something I would not be able to. Get calculated and practiced by the firm or it would have to be delayed until. Um. Give me some time to get those calculations in place to make sure that. If there's any expenditure cuts that you understand the revenue streams that are associated with all costs.
I guess. Should we cancel tomorrow's financial meeting and wait for you to have the, you know, the information put together? It seems like. You know, we're trying to save money. But one meeting is not a lot of it.
I think that we'll wait until you come back to this meeting to determine what that looks like.
So yeah, I'm here. We'll come back to it. Any other questions?
And Sam. Mr. Cherry, I'm a little frustrated to be sold. Building and mostly. And then all, but yeah, it's a lot of time out of it and yeah, we're into a situation where now. You gotta look at the whole business that your district department. The role one. So you got to manage the public system. Um, so I guess what you're saying is the strong is supposed to propose that there's a spend except right now. That's worth paying, that was that one point. So those aren't, those were allocated, they're unfunded.
Those are unfunded as right now.
Well, you keep the spend on that.
Yes, those, the capital side of things is, you know, right now, I just want to make sure that the board is aware of what. Projects were told, um, we are able to fund that the remaining capital would be smarter than Paul. So if our capital side of things, unless there's disagreement on this, we would be able to sponsor up the capital.
Then going down to the next page, that one two four or one two five, it's still in the short call, one point one. Page.
Right.
That's the quickest and the next page is what else can we pull from that?
Right, so on the one point. One million that we're still over and operating. Um, those items that I went over, so our one time approach. Those we would be able to take up. No, no, I keep the paper pushing easy button, because we're not, this is not easy. Um, but if we were taking those one time scenario and balance the twenty twenty budget, we would be able to. Need the one point one million. Um, if the board is not. You know, that's, that's a question because it's really. That there's hard work that needs to be done and we think about it and the rest of the rest of ourselves, because I'm thirteen. You know, there's a lot of work to be done because. This is a, a charter collusion. Um, and it, it does not directly, I don't know, you know, operational compared to. But also it is the, you know, gives the county time to evaluate the program, to understand those mandates. Um, what services do we want to provide, community involvement, all of them. And that, you know, that is. You know, when you go to that last page, again, it's a temporary, it's a temporary solution to. If that makes sense. If that makes sense.
Right, that's that's the good example.
Is that you?
So temporarily, I'm looking at, I'm here for city aid on the federal on their own time. People, how many rounds of previous. Um, anybody who found this role appointment, I'll use the self. So what you're looking at is there is a public. That we want to order to come up with your sort of like.
I would assume that those classes move into twenty twenty five.
There's been so many questions. They just talk for the for eight hundred and telling you more every year we have to tell them next and the next. This is this is the fact of the law, I mean, all they're having. One of the things that I don't agree.
Any other questions?
Hope to say comment uh. I would be, I've been waiting for just waiting on the came today to get a smooth finish here. I printed off. That packet and I I went through the book and it was animated. There's a lot. A lot. So it's going to take some time to go through and sort of what we can. What we can be all about. Not going to do that, it would be very thoughtful. So uh. Anyway. I'm looking at this for the presentation today and it's proved by this time. What we've been willing to own here possibly eliminate. But it's if we won't be able to get through this all today, decide how much of that where. It'll it's gonna it's gonna take some work, so. My thought.
Thank you. Any others?
Thanks, Chairman Moore. I I know. When this kind of all came out, that I I first heard, but I'm not a. I reached out to IT and Brett. Yeah. And I know the Brett that. Yeah, I said, you know. We have to do something, you know, and it put it frankly, it is. Have to do band aid solutions to get through, but there's a lot of band aid. You know, you'd mentioned that it was awful, the pack economy should fix the road. You know, they I I think there is some more costs saved and. And we can find, especially with, you know, making position. They get in fact that you talk to Brett, you can hold off on hiring another IT. Uh, position and so forth to friends that. But I mean, what I urge, Tony Moore, but what they're on is top for me. You know, where can we save six months? You know, I I think there's more than we do and it it it's kicking can. But you know, even in private fact, I have my job as keeping the can to pay the bills, right? So I guess you have to. Because what you can't do is not. But I I I think there are some more tweaks that we can make. There aren't just great cuts to projects or reallocation of funds from projects that we're going to talk about from twenty one one. Yeah, uh that's the time I was thinking for the bar thing. You know, and I've done a lot since twenty one, right? Um, so I I. I really appreciate all of this is something that we're gonna have to and, you know, I. I feel terrible that we're gonna have to. Do something, but we have to, but I think this, you know, I I ever draw upon your. Call ahead, so I'm here, you know, people working to tell you and say, hey. We all got to put our big white, you know, big old cats on here. How good are the really figure out what's important and what's not, and then that's it all together and good, right? One phone call, Brett, but you got six months of salary that we can take, you know, and 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 that's a burden on Brett. That's a big deal. So I think, you know, we can. All you dig into what we're assigned. Find a little and if we all move a little, it's a lot. But I mean, we're gonna have to do something and it's not gonna be fun for anyone. But, you know, you can all find one thing, right? We can all just find one little thing that can make weather. But I urge all of you to reach out and really talk about the topic. I thought the DA thought this could pull off. I don't know if there's a four staff member. Right? I think that communication has to come there, but I think. You know, asking young employees to toughen up six months and might save us on some of the future pain of not. Being able to properly increase your wages, potentially losing high quali- high qualified experience. Boy, he, you know, that's expensive too on the back that evidence for places. People do. But then, I mean, yeah, that's something, you know, we we talk a lot about. Spending the money, saving of the money is a hard part. And, uh, you know, whether it's going to be increased revenue, which is a very nice way of saying increase a tax on the on somebody. Right? I mean, that's that's not, I don't know, I wouldn't be afraid to say that, but. You know, there are two things you can do, cut the loss, increase revenue. That's it. That's all the options that we have, right? But I mean. If we want to keep the county vaulting as well as having them, we're probably not going to make some revenue somewhere. But this, these are the thoughts to save our bucks right now. But what are we going to do? We're just going to have to stay in issue. Correct? That's weird. Figure out. What's important, what's not, and what, you know, the good people of a pack are going to pay for. But for now, we're gonna have to stop. That is, I think, I think great part of the day, I think it's great ideas, but there should be conversations about. The longevity and sustainability of what is going to pay. Um, I mean, I I get supportive whatever we have to do, but right, I think there is a larger discussion probably. And I'll show that.
Here. But I appreciate uh. That's great. I'm fighting Roger with that at my hand. You know, that I want to make a decision. I thought that's what the news been. We're we're gonna push this onto a new floor. Who knows how many of us are going to be here that have any experience. Or any knowledge of these discussions that were any people, four, five, six, brand new people who know. Where did I expect that? I think we talked calls. When supervisors like uh provide a job transfer. Try and catch up uh to those of us that have been on the board, seeing some of this started to develop. There's a learning curve. I think. I understand why people want to take. Sometimes it's necessary. I think today we have to make some of those. Fundamental changes.
Thank you, Chris. Any other?
Yeah, if you're ready, it can be worked on from what happened, um, several dollars. Same thing, but if we had done this headwind, we'll run for rent. With that, it's not, it's not, it's not, that's what I. Because all the other things. I I hate to quote myself. Just wait to speak about what I. Why now rely on taxes on them?
Uh, looking at the information we get from forward analytics, then we have some of them. Uh, twenty ten, twenty twenty, we actually went backwards in population. And uh another part of the demographics is that we're all getting older, they have a piece of everything else. So as far as uh prostitute cats, how far can we help citizens? We don't have a ton of big businesses uh to pull from. So uh. Yeah, we need more money, but we'll have to try and um. See where we can pull from the debts and and play police to pay. Uh, firstly, I my my opinion is we leave the rep random sort of school. And uh I'm kind of looking towards a field tax on solving money. It's not my better thing to do, but we may have.
And I need, I need to go on a little bit with. Our current areas in sustaining, that is construction, we are a value community, since I think that somewhat. Something that strategically, if if I choose to call them. Then how do you produce this as a dual pack economy? And I think that's our approach, that's how we need to look at it. And how do you keep your businesses here? And so um I think that's a planning uh mechanism that has to occur and. I mean, you know, burning businesses is one pack economy and where your net construction is and not in. You know, a lot of people think it's false and and that's not, that's not where it's coming from. Everybody will play it, it's a whole way of everywhere, our network infrastructure doesn't go up. Because there's no business coming to a pack economy and, you know, it is, it's. He he to uh keep our big businesses in a pack economy and attract more businesses into a pack economy. Not attracting a value community. And so um we we know that that's what the pack economy is, we're surrounded by larger companies. People come here to live and then they drive out to the surrounding companies to to their business and to work and develop things. So that is something that, you know, a strategic approach to the pack economy, and in the long term, obviously, that's something that the tech overnight as well. But it's something that would generate more revenue without the increase to here. Start these things that thirdly, you could recommend other um bigger makes of activity to rely on.
Sir.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Cherry. Number four here is suspending increases by. That increases. One hundred and fifty percent. I heard it fine ears. We bring something of what we have features that has been still.
That the numbers that I have given, um UX one point one million does influence health insurance, that was. One other unknown that we did have to reference in the budget. Um, health insurance, playing our experience is increasing. Uh, we started out um in the budget process, we would estimate a twenty eight percent uh increase for health insurance. And um our HR department, along with our insurance consultants, um were diligently to do some plan design changes. Um, and so with those changes, we were able to bring that down to. Their recommendation is fourteen percent, we went in, we went can with a twelve percent increase on on health insurance premium. Uh, which is also, you know, we have the employers here that also uh focus on increase to the employee as well. So that's where we're at on health insurance. But that I did give those numbers calculated for the question. Yeah.
Uh, so real quick, please, here, uh, one point one dance or a. Uh, there uh with, and I'll talk about here about. Second, accepting certain alerts and reasons, although. Uh, that's just for regular. That's a cross sector.
Right.
Five of your heroes. That over.
Right, right, that is significant when you're. And uh that it it not just that it will stop and it's being tracked and for resolution for electric service. So that's also the that's one one day calculation, by example, back and all, yeah, to give uh in fact, um.
And then the quality base, where you have various. Wicked these discussions, those sessions. Who knows, the home physicians that that you had, and the fellow communicators. Um, those are all, those figures are what we would say if they were not still a project area.
Those are the numbers that we remove from the mindset.
Right, this budget is that, okay. So roughly speaking, since we did the. Question of the threat increases. And then the one through four. Suggestions that we have here. Um. That pretty much people don't both. What we're. Over.
Right, unless you go back and went to calculate and figure out how much is he under contact with the resolution for. Who's funded by right now ours? Um, and it would also be a policy change. It's a policy base, that that everyone receives those stuff and agrees on annual basis. So it'd be a uh uh HR change.
And so what should we have here for this? Case you really are speaking about of that, really, his ideas. You come up with. Collaboration, obviously, you were part of the. Maybe a way of bringing that over to the brass.
Um, one. The one through five came from probably board members. And then the 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 back pages, um, the position making factors and other options for things that, yeah, um, for things that. You know, trying to um give time to analyze and figure figure things out, um. You know. Kind of go back to um. Superior Johnson's pattern, you know, we have, you you take a risk of losing a good workforce. And high quality, you know, high quality individuals and which also comes with a cost as well. So I just with caution on a lot of those pieces, um, because. You want to keep your workforce and it's, you know, I just know how much time I. I mean, I have experienced turnover in my end department in a number of years. And I've experienced some turnover and it is complicated because it takes a lot of time um to. To to develop that, yeah, that make sure that they have, you know, I think on the operation, so they're they're in contact with that as well.
I think this one brief, sir, if you want us to then. Okay, you impose that and whatever, then take consideration at the board for all these possible. Things in the senior employee.
Uh, the 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 whole, I have a list here that we're moving, moving. And when we get down to the February seventh, we've covered the gap. We don't need. Uh, so there's steps. And we're able. Appreciate we still have a gap and looking, so it's.
So with I need here, it's really. Oh, for me, sure, thank you very much for the day. Um, they help us a better idea of what choices we have. So we can get further on the meeting today, so we had.
We'll be going very shortly here.
Okay.
None of the items are supposed to. Quality, we meet the requirements of the hotel, yes, so all this.
Two more.
The uh seven hundred and fifty month time project, what uh explain that to be uh a little bit that available for. Reduced the budget or not?
It is, it is available, it's funding that is in economic development fund currently currently. It was meant to be used for seed funding for grand dollars with. The government, it is my understanding that there were no more. Out of that that funding coming to a pack economy, which means. We have nobody to see that money to through our map town. And I believe that program is done. There is no more rough candy money. So that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we set up by to see that broadband project. We expended um some of it on, and you know, with consultants to figure out where our gaps were. Um, there, so. It's it's basically that those ones are in that economic development fund and we don't anticipate that. There's any broadband funding that we would be able to even match in the future. And if there becomes something in the future, we can address that at that point and hope that we're at at in a proper position. Um. Does anybody, Brian is very familiar with this.
Yeah. No, that's fine, so. Yeah, so what ended up happening was we had seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was pledged to go with the words frontier communications as a local map. For their grants application for B, which needed broadband access in the plan of program that was first enacted within the Biden administration. So there's a billion dollars available throughout the state for broadband expansion. And so. Uh. Preliminary wars have come up and not the final wars just yet, but preliminarily, frontier did not get that contract, did not get that over. And so we have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars now, that there's no longer going to be pledged back to frontier communications for them. And so there is still money to available at the state level for broadband. But what I'm hearing right now is that through this billion dollars that they had earmarked for B. There's not a whole lot that's going to be left in terms of public private partnerships going forward. And so that's not to say that the pack economy is still not working for broadband expansion. But I think the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be best served someplace else.
So okay, would that seven hundred and fifty go towards the one point one million?
Correct, that's correct.
So we're we're one big step there. Then you get a hundred thousand dollars and the whole piece that will. That can go there. So you're almost three quarters of the way to that. So.
So so at that whole stage, you could find your one point one million. I also wanted to understand what what that means. I would, you know, those, those um, those are, this is a way to. You know, like, like I said earlier, just because you would take that number and say, what am I doing like that? Because now it's a funding, it's a budget, that doesn't mean that you have to use it, right? It means that. If you, you know, if it's discovered or becoming worse than you know what. This, you know, or if you're managing programs and you want to make some changes. Doesn't mean that you can't make those changes. You can always amend your budget and utilize um compensating measures to do that, but that is exactly. That. But these items that I have listed here would give us where it needs to be.
And was that a trick?
I agree. I also agree with you. Um, we. As a board member. Really upset in what he was positioned. I feel like I'm. Put in a box that I have to die, and I'm. Not enough to die.
Great, we need our time and thinking.
Most of that went to the bell conference. There were so many sessions on Friday. And our latest came out from the vehicle, who great are they on budgeting? And the suggestion is that they can start with the process and even if they're not in. October, because I would like it to be a two, so then. And so that's. But we need to fix it forward with a strategic plan, things that can be carried over here, that here, that here. But right now I feel like we are in the box. And we have.
Great.
Oh, we definitely need to go forward.
Right, yes.
And we're.
Thank you.
I realize it would just be a bandaid, but is there a possibility of uh turning out? Those capital outlaying like over five years. That still gonna give us more time to really dig into things? Because we're dealing with people's lives here. You know, that's.
If it would be, if it would be anything to get a life on um belt path. For. Versus capital. Now.
I'm gonna kick you out. By. Steps one more time. Ask people insurance. Drive. Uh. Because they're all these extra costs now. It'll be any more. Expectation of employees. They anything else conditional? And we're not gonna give them already. Is there anything conditional that we're asking them? Be able to ensure. The expectation though. The doctor bowls of water.
Yeah. Yes. It is. It's my mind change. So um there is. Some plan that there is more approximately employees with a plan that I change on top of the of problems. I have some problems I'm reading. In respect.
So I, my understanding is that number four was presented by uh. Somebody else here. That uh. It's a good idea for for um it's it's an idea. But that's as I mentioned. The next page is the one where we can work on. We don't have to. Uh pull so hard on any one line item here. I don't. I don't want to uh. Pick up our employees that it's it's uh.
That's my point.
Yeah. So. That number four uh. I think that's that's kind of a. Low on the list as far as what we. We can pull out of that. I mean, but they're already taking a cut on their uh. Insurance benefits. So that's. That's one thing. Uh. One and a half percent of the living adjustment, that's. Pretty standard social security. Uh I don't, I don't believe that word is being over the general there either. So. I think uh focus more on the other options. For the time being and uh see what we can. Well, on the on the next page. But the old voice settlement, the broadband. Uh. Other options, so.
Okay. Uh we've had some discussion, if I'd like to go get into this option, so we can kind of go through here and uh and see where we're at. Um. I have a list I have in my mind, it's what um. I need here to rescue you with it. And uh so Christie has set these up. So that's my point. I will listen to this. Sure. Um. Well, starting with, for example, number one, I have this coming board by chair. Uh so you're pressing. Uh salary to call those. Two uh coming for surprise, it's not being for interviews for the policies. Three, I have a full time. Extension, U W extension support for this area of assistant contract collision savings for the first. Or uh another half of position or that we extension. I have a decision. Uh fishing in place of provides. Thirty thousand dollar savings. I remove funding, but they account position. Are one fifty one, eight seventy nine savings. Sixty move by even when they too now committed. Here positions for one hundred seventy two thousand. Seven allocated ninety six thousand or seven funding for substances. Score. Eight uh reality seven hundred thousand. One high broadband expansion funds. And then number nine transfer funds from the highway operations fund. To general fund. They must be determined based on. Yeah, yeah, but that's fine. Yes, so go from one through nine. Be ready to cover the gap this year. And back to my original state, so we. Looking forward to the futures we come up with. Uh lands were. I services whatever. This is basis. This gives us some time in the next year. Book rate. Early. So that come up with some real well thought solutions. That will. Uh. Set some for huge charges. So. All right, uh the first one is that come, yes.
What is the? Number from transfer of months to five.
Then, it then just be determined on how we again we have. After we go to beautiful. Let's see, I should go on almost nothing. If we were to remove any challenges.
Individually.
Individually. And uh so some may not improve. While we can improve, maybe there are those small. Some of them might improve, maybe they might. Determine so forth. So that's the plan. So I go through and go on each one of these individual. In the secret. Wondering if we could fasten your math list instead of bouncing around here. Have a. Basically, I don't think that.
How many got?
I think it's four.
Wait, there are nine also. How many? Thirty. Five. And nine.
Um, I have a question, Chairman. The on the first page here, this that you gave us. One point eighty nine thirty. One day eight or nine thousand. That towards a two billion would sort of add side of the equation.
Right, right there. I didn't have.
Exactly.
The capital, I believe you're there.
Okay. Well, then basically what we're voting on there is to come up one point one sixteen million. Okay, all that. I mean, we keep talking numbers here, but I.
We put a lot of numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So I think there's, there is.
Safety by minimum rate. For that.
So I, I, yeah.
Christie has asked if I follow the numbers here. I have diverse. Eight nine. First, she's ready to set up. So for for these numbers. Anticipated these functions. I had suggested to the county board chair at first, some of the reason that. Uh while I realized this was a small model compared to the thick head share. I'll send a message to her employees and staff and that county board. If you move artists together, you share your pain. So that's why I had uh. Eight nine first. Anyway. But um in order to uh make things a little simpler here, I will follow the sequences identified at machine. Starting with number one is for motion to. Cut. Full time. One and a half, full time. Extension, U W extension support, the registered assistant contract position. Would anticipate that savings of forty one points, four hundred and fifty nine dollars, deserve motion to that. I saw a big submission to a second.
I'll check it out.
Oh, okay, please. Uh let me ask you guys after the second set game discussion on number one. Hi. This all.
You can all. You can all leave our budget. I don't, they don't need to.
I don't know about.
He's coming.
If we're just wait, what's on?
We're getting both times.
Oh.
Nothing.
Last chance to vote. That carries nineteen to one.
Next, number two, the pack. Uh full time independent position for the U W extension. Uh position to the Christian place of vice. The savings of thirty two thousand, five hundred eighty two thousand. This is a motion to that.
Got it.
Supposedly, child, this number seven.
Buck will do it again.
Five seconds, I do. Any discussion?
Yeah, this chairman, I. The the. Definitely making this food line. Really, that's a lot of young children educated. Well, I would, you know. Well, fair amount of money, but yeah, I think I, I think it, I I think I support.
Can you, any other comments? Uh please vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries sixteen to four.
Yep. Item number three, move funding to the name account position on English for overback finance director position and the savings of. One hundred fifty one thousand eight hundred seventy nine dollars is there. Okay, the travel continues by spot. Make some motions or second payment for that. Was it possible second? Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries twenty to zero.
Item number four, remove funding to the name to have a community. Here positions that saves a hundred and seventy eight thousand seven hundred ten dollars for motion. Surprise, surprise of the year. Third second. Okay. Uh surprise, there are a set. Okay, uh five hundred percent. Second motion, any discussion?
As the chair. That you have enough money to provide for some overtime. Or tandem.
You're not, you're not, you're set up, Alan, you're not.
Well, we wouldn't vote because that determines if someone's absent for a long period of time. Or going get older, you know, more occasions scheduled, so. You know, it means I, I'll vote for them though.
So you have an increase for budget. So. Pay it to yourself.
No.
Any other questions, thank you. This question. Not, please vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries twenty to zero.
Thank you. Next, number five, allocate ninety six thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, fifteen dollars. Avoid settlement funding for substance uses or elsewhere. Also. Supervising will to second. Supervisor has moved. Any discussion on that? Cindy.
So how much left in the whole thing? Um there is about one. There's over fifty thousand dollars in that fund, we were feeding um approximately, there's like a hundred and ninety thousand dollars here.
And there be uh some, uh some that are being uh fined like that, so don't have dollars. But those will be the last.
Any other discussions, Kyle? So our devices.
That's a lot of restrictions done, I'll definitely.
Correct. Yeah.
Now, just, just a question, I don't know if conservatives have counselors. Old people say pro. Have counselor, all their self located. If you hear the question. Do we have counseling available for people in that situation?
That would work, the needed will, okay. First, they can leave, they can explore.
So we're cutting that one monthly council.
We're not, please, please.
Yeah.
Oh, that's a. You, alright, I'll wait.
I'll throw an ass.
Any other questions, discussions? Thank you, Mary. Okay, please vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries twenty to zero.
Next, number six, allocate seven hundred fifty thousand one time broadband expansion funds. Promotion to have that. Five to twelve. Five, five to second. Five to twelve. Uh.
Well, no, no.
Wait, next, sir.
Yes.
Five to second. Any discussion, questions? Okay, please vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries twenty to zero.
Okay, we're agreed.
We're gonna go to eighty thousand eight hundred and twenty eight dollars.
Should we stop?
I'm worried the dollars can be about eighty thousand eight hundred and twenty eight dollars.
Okay, stop at this point, you know, we're the minus. Always. I suppose, I suppose. You know, very. Oh, yes. Uh county board, I'm here, cut. Salary making all costs for the year. Right, I, I, I make the motion and I, I want to compliment Chair Morikon's leadership in this process. Thank you. Please have it. I five to second. Any discussion?
One second, please, that number one more. Okay, the motion was made by Superintendent Nygaard.
Yes.
Seconded by Superintendent Bussler.
Yes.
Okay, and now we are. Okay.
Please vote.
Supervisor, sorry, please vote.
Right. Move, oh.
Last chance to vote. Then here is seventeen to three.
This was there, uh number nine, county board supervisor not paid for interviews. And saves support.
Okay.
Second, so I assume since. You uh five to seven. Any discussion on number nine? Uh.
But as well, I know kind of late at days, but I would throw the deal in for eight on top of it. You know, maybe you can help that we can have. I've figured for that. Okay, so you meant. I would have meant that to you for a little bit. Or any person from then that. Don't look at first. When it comes to. Five second, again. I expect that, and uh uh about last second. Okay, any session or small on. Amendment to the motion. They want a way, I think, that's what we're seeing. Uh you can consider that a motion, be able to. That's right. Well. Or the.
Are you talking about those for the interviews or any time, any time supervisor by craft or sending to a country, no deal.
Right. Consequences. Well, we're gonna say. Definitely.
Right, yes, we would have to make um a change to check that you've embedded in the ordinance.
Yeah. Three, three hundred thirty. Oh my god. For my five. Then what, when you, uh. I'm a. Yeah, we're prepared. The uh this color is well, that. The third one. Now here, um originally I did. That's about.
I guess my suggestion is because it isn't the ordinance that we take something becoming that, because it can, that the following order.
Yeah.
That is for the media for.
Um. But if we go for it now, I'll just as time to change it before the fact.
But.
That's what I would need to do.
But if we go for it now, we're acting contrary to whatever. I, I don't think if you vote out, you know, it's gonna hold water as we've been told in the same.
You're not gonna save enough money anyway.
You would still have to change the ordinance first in order to manage it.
Okay, the motion remains second, and I, I didn't have a, like, somebody here, so we want to go down to them. Alright, that's called a vote on amendment. And whatever we're, we're cutting is the panels. In. At certain place. And we can hear this. So if you go, yes, with eliminate. Pretty much, uh, we almost seventeen pounds.
There was a vote taken in the second day, we're gonna go down there.
Then, right. Report right now upon the amendment. Good group, in this. So, yes, so save eliminate. Oh, oh. Me, you would compete. Reversed for the cost of being able to. Conference. Very good, second. Okay. So.
Second round of others, please, please vote. Second round of others. Last chance to vote. That passed by the majority, ten to nine. With one I see.
If out, boy, I'm gonna give. Show, uh the uh. Motion.
Can I have a question for a moment, Gary? Okay, that's the original.
Okay, the, the motion now says supervisors will not be paid for interviews or for meals or conference, so. Or for work. Self, the bad. That, that, that will save them. Now recording, I don't know. Also, uh, is the.
And then, then it has this pass, we need to go back. Now we're just going to, uh, so, and then. The motion as of then. And even at that.
So if I don't wanna get paid for my meal, I say no. I mean, I've been on here till here. Oh, yes, what would play in my voice?
Okay.
That I gotta vote yes, if I don't want.
If you vote yes. That supervisors will not be paid. Any interviews. And you will not be reimbursed. Meals. To attend the conference. If you vote no. Then we will continue to pay supervisors sitting in on interviews. And you will continue to be reimbursed. For all of our costs. People's. The extended question, so. Um, okay, so. So, okay. Okay.
Okay. I thought it's thirty seven hours. I know. Alright, then.
I would like to, you not coming through clear, and you're there. Right, so.
Just do what you're changing, no.
Right.
My answer is pretty important.
Yes. That's right. This is twenty six. This is twenty six budget, so we're in October of twenty five. So there's time to make change.
Right, our.
If that's the will of the committee. Any change that happens to the ordinance that is not in April eighth compared to the time you were in that? But it only needs the authority of the. So.
Okay, one more time. Thanks, vote.
You're ready to come to the original point, you're playing.
I said.
It's true, yeah, okay, that's what I. Okay.
Sure.
Last chance to vote. That passed by the majority of sixteen to four.
Alright, but then. Are we ready for? We need more of these motions. We are now positive. So. So. Question, and, and uh, since we're in a situation. Need to finance. The one.
We'll have the number five. Uh. Yeah, it. You're pretty, pretty amazing, man, I mean, so. Can you recommend that?
I think to answer now, would be, I don't know what might be done outside of, I know, but we can record it, but.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much, I think. I guess we're ready to try.
Big vote, please, Eric.
And yes, thank you all, your lights. All of the time, I just want to.